Check one, two. How does it sound out there? Is it okay? All right, we've got, this is our own PA that we control, so very excited about that. All right. I have an invocation from Rabbi Fesora, the congregation of Orv Shalom.
Mr. Mayor, City Council members, thank you very much for having me.
Thank you, Rabbi.
And fellow residents of Brookhaven. I think the first meeting actually took place at our synagogue on North 200th Road.
It did.
I'm very glad to be here. Eternal God, Supreme Creator, we are gathered in behalf of our people's cause and our ideals, and we ask, oh Lord, your blessings upon the work of our hands and the work of our City Council. Grant us discernment and guidance in all of our avenues of activity. Enable us to discharge our responsibilities diligently and faithfully with sincerity of purpose, accompanying our every deed. Bless our endeavors to bring a measure of salvation and rehabilitation and success to our brothers and sisters here in Brookhaven and indeed throughout the world. Oh Lord, keep our beloved country safe and secure, free from every enemy, from within and from without. Inspire us, the citizens of this land, this land of the free, to fully appreciate the precious rights and privileges that we have been destined to enjoy. And cause thy precepts of love, loving kindness and tolerance to motivate the patterns of our lives. And may our common objective ever be the endowment of life, liberty and the pursuit of happiness for all the inhabitants of our land. And finally, at this blessed time of the year, Hanukkah was just two weeks ago, and Christmas, that blessed and sanctified holiday is coming up. Usually they coincide, but this year Hanukkah's two weeks earlier. And New Year's coming up. As we approach this blessed time of Christmas and the New Year, we ask you, oh Lord, to bless us with health, with goodness, with understanding. Help us to achieve comprehension of our purpose to life. Help us to be bearers of love in a world that really cries out for love. And we pray that this year, this time of sanctity, this time of the New Year, should be well for us, for all mankind. It should be a year of peace and fulfillment among all humanity, among all of us here in this beautiful city of Brookhaven, in Atlanta, and indeed throughout our beautiful and blessed nation. Let us say amen.
Rabbi, I just say you never disappoint with your prayers. That's great. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. We need, thank you.
That's a great prayer.
All right. Yes. Call this regular meeting of the Brookhaven City Council to order. Susan, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Rebecca Williams, District One, present. Councilmember Jim Meyer, District Two.
Here.
Councilmember Bates Madison, District Three.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Gebbia, District Four.
Here.
Quorum present. Thank you.
Thank you. Please stand for the pledge.
My pledge will be to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which stands, one nation, united, individual, liberty and justice for all.
Opening remarks. Just, there's the celebration after the meeting tonight at Town Brookhaven at seven o'clock, the commemoration of our one-year birthday. Please bring a can of food if you'd like to come. I don't know who'll be monitoring that, but I'm gonna put Daniel at door. And then tomorrow, we have the tree lighting at seven o'clock at Blackburn Park, and just before that or after that is the Time Council burial. After the Time Council be buried, after the tree lighting at Blackburn Park right off Ashford-Dunwoody Road. So if you're still accepting submissions for the Time Council, all right, if you have anything you want to put in there that's rather small, please let us know. Those are just my opening remarks. All right. Anything else that I need to? Okay. Public hearing. Where is that one here? Yes. Okay. I'm gonna open the public hearing on the budget and on the Ryland Homes rezoning application that has been withdrawn. Yes.
Since the applicant has requested a withdrawal for that rezoning, we still will have to conduct the public hearing.
Right.
Since it seems imminent that it will be withdrawn, you might wanna address that one first.
Okay.
And then we can go to the public.
Okay. We'll do, we'll switch the order up and do the public hearing on the RZ 13-13. Would anybody like to come speak about that?
Mayor and Council, this is case RZ 1313. The request is of Ryland Homes. The property is located off Sylvan Circle on Cusawati Drive. The site contains 3.374 acres.
Can you speak a little closer?
The existing zoning is R 75. The requested zoning, I'm trying not to touch the microphone. The requested rezoning is RA8. The property owners are Allenfield, Stephen and Joanne Fields and William Fields. And this application, a request for rezoning, was heard by the planning commission. Both the staff and the planning commission recommended denial. During the planning commission hearing, the applicant asked for a deferral, which makes its way to you tonight. This afternoon, we did receive a letter from the applicant asking for withdrawal without prejudice. We do have that in writing, however you do your requirement of hold your.
All right.
Thank you.
Daniel?
Jennifer Heath.
I'm the applicant.
I'm sorry.
Kenneth Wood, 350 Research Court. I represent Ryland Homes on the subject property. What I wanted to do is just kinda come up and explain where we've been and kinda where we're going on this, so everybody can kinda inform. This is a, the property is a very irregular-shaped property, this 3.374 acre. And we originally met and submitted for a neighborhood conservation plan. In doing that, because we have about 50 percent open space.
Where's the road? The road, the permanent road is on there?
Uh, this is Cusawati.
Uh-huh.
And this is Sylvan.
All right.
On this side. And there's a creek that runs through the middle. So what we were planning on doing was trying to do the conservation subdivision, but we didn't meet the 10-acre minimum, and there's no way to vary that. So we came back in and looked, and we had apartments on our south and some RA8 zoning around here. And in order to get the lot sizes we were looking at, we decided to go with RA8 after talking with staff. And then we got through the recommendation of denial from staff, and then a couple of days later was the planning commission. And so we did not want to move forward with the recommendation of denial. And so we went to the planning commission to try to get a deferral, and ended up getting a denial of the deferral. And so we met with the neighborhood, and we ended up having probably 15, 16 people in attendance to show them the plan and get comments. And there were some really good comments that came out of it, and I was able to go back to the neighbor, to the property owners and the developer Ryland Homes and discuss getting rid of the zoning altogether, withdrawing without prejudice, and just coming back in and instead of trying to do the road with four lots, just could come back in as the neighborhood had suggested and just do three lots across the frontage with a variance. And so we are requesting withdrawal without prejudice, and we already have a variance application that has been filed, and we were talking to Ben, and we would just make modifications to that for the lot width, and then meet with the neighborhood again to gain their support, and then move forward with the variance.
Thank you. Do you have any meetings scheduled yet?
Uh, no. We were, we were, just now created that plan today, and so what we're planning on doing, Ben said we needed to submit the first of January, and then we're in contact with Andrea, the head of the neighborhood, and we'll probably try to meet the second week of January.
All right. Thank you. Next, Daniel?
Jennifer Heath, 1416 Sylvan Circle, building the house, or refinishing the house at 1412 Sylvan Circle. I'm actually an adjacent property owner. In fact, if my backyard will butt the new development, it stands right across on the other side of the creek. Two creeks, not one. And we were never notified of any meetings with the developer, just wanted to stay on record. And being an adjacent property owner, it's kind of odd about that. Don't have a problem with building houses there, think that's a great idea. Don't go into the bumpers, leave the creek alone, and don't put sudden house bumps at property blocks. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Heath. Next, Daniel?
Catherine Heath.
Hi, Catherine Heath, that's me, 1416 Sylvan Circle. And I just wanted to mention, did you notice something during this whole process?
Yes, we did.
Uh, what, uh, we, we have some concerns with the plat maps that say this. And we, as part of this process, if we go forward and it goes back through the submission, we'd like to make sure that those are corrected, because there are some errors on that map that we're seeing. Okay?
Thank you. You take note of that. Susan?
I think we should just take a few notes.
Susan?
We did have that comment brought forward to us in the planning commission hearing, and we did receive an email. There appears to be a property line dispute that they will need resolved.
Okay. Daniel, will you bend the mic down a little bit, please? There's a maximum number of heats that we're gonna be allowed to speak tonight, so I don't have any more coming, or more outside. Just a note to staff while the next person's coming up, that it might be a good idea to have the residents that are affected contact the property owner while they're at this meeting. Might be helpful.
Yes, I, we're not invited to any.
Can you state your address, please?
Uh, it's 1416 Sylvan Circle. Um, I just really wanna say, they brought up at the end of the zoning meeting, planning meeting, that everybody has a right to do their property, but I just don't think they have a right to do their property like hit and run. I want this special zoning, so I can take that extra money to get out of town. They are going to leave people there who have to deal with it. And it just seems to me that everybody has to compromise a little, and six houses instead of seven. You've got the lot there, you've got the land. You will land lock the creek, but I think Brookhaven could come up with some right-of-way to the creek if you needed it, so. Anyway, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Heath.
And that's the last one?
Oh, yeah, okay. All right.
Gina, if it's on you?
Is that, if Daniel maskers her name, please come up and just correct it for us. He's known, he's known for the.
I saw him how to say it before.
Oh, did you?
Thank you for having me. I'm Gina Ginfagna at 1347 Cardaque Drive.
Gina?
I sent some pictures out to you all, just to show you the current issues we've had. And it's not one issue, it's DeKalb County not dredging some drains we've been asking them to dredge for several years. It's silt fences that were faulty in the past. It's a combination of factors in addition to our terrain. This is not a Class II rapid in the Northridge Mountains. This is my backyard.
Is any of the, are any of these places in the floodplain?
It is. Um, it's back, this is upper Cardaque, which is a couple houses away from Sylvan Circle. So, um, yeah, there is a floodplain back there. I don't know a proper definition of what metrics would define that, but, you know, every ill wind blows some good. I'm actually pleased that this has become such a controversial issue, because it's not any one problem, like I said before. It's, it's a few things that need to be addressed, and I'm glad it's been brought to the attention of the city, because I'm very confident in our council, and I'm glad we have representation close to home. And one way or another, I think this will get addressed. I, I just really wanna put it on record that abbreviating the variance, the stream buffer at this point in time before these problems are resolved would just encourage more flooding in these areas between the streets, yards, fences that have been compromised, tree roots that are getting weak. Uh, there are, there's one tree that came down a couple yards over three years ago.
Um, I think that, Marie, what our public works, we could be addressing the clogged drains and whatnot, and I learned from Councilman.
Through a stormwater utility program, absolutely.
Right. So that's something that we can start addressing, obviously. Um, but I learned from Councilman Iyer yesterday that stream buffers really don't have a direct, the purpose of stream buffers is not for flood abatement, it's for water quality management. Um, so I wanna make sure, like you're saying, that there are other reasons behind this, and we wanna address those. We wanna make sure that the, we don't confuse an issue about stream buffers in that stream buffers are not meant to deter flooding, they're meant to, um, this is what Jim's told me, and if I'm wrong, they're meant to ensure water, you know, runoff and sediment and nitrate, things of that nature.
Stay tuned to our second council meeting in January, where we'll have experts talk on this issue.
I will be an expert on stream buff, I think I'll be an expert.
Yeah, I understood they were also used for flood control. Maybe that's.
Is that why? I don't know. It might be.
I grew up in Florida, my father's a licensed general contractor down there. Now, we have different concerns with canals and so forth, but up here, I did a little research, and I understood they were also playing a role in flood control.
The Georgia ordinance is set up specific to water quality. Uh, you know, it originally started with trapped streams in North Georgia, and then it was brought south, so it may be different in Florida, and they may be used for different purposes, but the Georgia ordinance is specific to water quality, and the 75 feet was a, was a number that they felt like, as, as the mayor said, would keep silt and other things out of the creeks, and, you know, but it, but it doesn't really, wasn't really set up to provide flooding. Now, there are other ordinances, there are other, you know, detention requirements and limitations on impervious area and those types of things that, that address the flooding or, or work with the flooding aspect of that. But the stream buffers themselves were brought in into Georgia, as I understand it, and I'm not an engineer, but, uh, is that simply for the water quality purposes. They do, um, they just allow a cleansing of the water before it hits the stream bank.
All right. Well, regardless, I appreciate your time and hearing all of us address the concerns.
Could you send us those pictures and that video as well?
Absolutely. Um, I've sent the pictures, and I may have to put the video on YouTube.
Okay.
And send you a link. It's five mags.
Thank you. That'd be a good idea. Thank you very much.
COB, or it's just Mayor and Council, mayor and council@brookhavenGA.gov. That gets dollars.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next.
I have three that clearly don't remain into the record.
Okay.
Um, the first one is Ann McAllister, and she does not want to overbuild this lot. Any reduction in lot size will not fit with the neighborhood, and please maintain the current stream buffer, and it's Ann McAllister.
Ann McAllister, all right.
The other one is Jerry Trotman, and, um, Ginny, excuse me, Ginny Trotman, and she says, I own three lots that are joined this property on the south. She lives on Cusawati Drive. The rezoning and private drive proposed on this redevelopment plan will diminish the value of the prop, of my property. The private road will impose corner lot setbacks on my adjoining lot and make it less attractive by significantly reducing the privacy of the lot. Also, we have Elizabeth Betsy Eckers, and she says, my property abuts to the north of the applicant's property on Cusawati Drive. I oppose the unnecessary new road being built. I support withdrawal without prejudice.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Do we need to close the public hearing on this issue and then open it up for the budget? Or is it still part of the same public hearing?
It's still part of the same public hearing, since there are no more comments, you can move on to the other item.
Yes, go ahead.
I had a question for Ms. Cannon. What is the requirement for the applicant to reach out and notify the adjacent homes? I, I thought it was required that they had to notify people within a certain radius.
The staff is required to notify of the upcoming public hearing. We do not have a neighborhood meeting requirement. Um, I'm not sure if that's what the applicants were referring to, but we are required to do the abutting promptly under notice, and it's 250 feet of property.
So the neighborhood meeting requirement that DeKalb had, that wasn't an ordinance, that was just a policy?
That we no longer have that requirement.
All right. I wouldn't mind reviewing that.
Didn't we have that for subdivisions? I thought we addressed that.
Wait, if I may.
Yes.
If you'll recall, very early in our tenure, we discussed that, and the reason why DeKalb County had such meetings, because, one, they were so large, and because now the city was incorporated, you know, local government was closer to home. So, you know, the property is still posted, and those properties within the distance that Ms. Cannon just sounded into the record, you know, they are notified. As far as, you know, any neighborhood meetings, you know, that is no longer provided, because the community can contact the city, and if they would like a meeting with city staff, then city staff would certainly be available to do that.
I remember that, and that's, I think that was a good reasoning for what we had, Tom. But would this not be considered a small subdivision, or?
But there, there was also a general discussion about how we provided notice to the neighborhoods, and I remember we talked about things like a neighborhood association list or master list or those types of things. So then we didn't short-circuit the, the process, or somehow made available to the applicant a list, or also suggested they reach out. I mean, you know, tonight, if there's anybody who wants to talk to the applicant, give them, give him your email address, on your future meetings, you can make sure you're copied. But, you know, oftentimes happens, I've seen it happen in our neighborhood, where we have a master neighborhood list, and we think we have everybody, but we don't. And so I'd like to see somehow, at least for the immediate neighbors, they be notified specifically if there is, I mean, something as simple as sticking a letter in the mailbox, that there is gonna be a, a neighborhood meeting or something for the, for that. But we did, I do agree that we did remove that, but there also was discussion about how we keep that element of the, of the process in our code, and how we are able to notify people that there is gonna be a neighborhood meeting, a public meeting of some type to discuss a, an action rezoning or subdivision or something like that.
We're doing that, but I think what you're referring to, Mr. Iyer, is where we were talking about subdivision plans, because remember, in DeKalb County, they go before the planning commission and then to the Board of Commissioners, and we removed that process also, but there was discussion about posting the property, so that at least the neighborhood and immediate property owners would know that a subdivision flat was being reviewed and had been submitted.
Does this fall under that? As a, I mean, what is it?
This is a rezoning. This is a rezoning.
Okay.
I know that we did away with the, the community council in part, because we're a small city and we've got, you know, great opportunity to, to be heard, but I just would like to see us find a way to encourage the develop, the applicant to, in fact, meet ahead of time with neighbors. One, I think people just don't like being surprised and being caught off guard. And my experience is that really the development is improved when you hear, when you hear feedback from the neighborhood, and so I, I always encourage developers to, you know, to do that ahead of time. DeKalb County actually would say, don't even come to us until you've met with the neighbors. And I don't, I didn't know that we completely did away with that policy. I'd like us to at least.
We can look at that and bring back some.
Encourage people to have pre-planning commission meetings, you know, with, with the neighborhoods, to really bet out these plans. They're the ones who are most affected, they live right there, they have the long-term investment. Let's, let's let them talk to each other.
Right. And we can do that, and as you all know, we are reviewing the process and the procedures of permitting and how all that comes about, and a lot of that is being revamped in the community development department, and we can include that as well.
Yeah, I'd like that as a.
Before you.
Even if we don't require, but it should be a checklist item on the, I think it should some, in some way weigh on recommendations from staff. If you've got a application where neighborhood meeting scheduled and occurred, no matter what happened, I think it's, I think that should be, you know, if it's legal, but for it to be a criteria that would influence their decision. I mean, I wish developers would understand how important it is to even go door-to-door to the people that you're, that surround your proposed development. At least talk to the neighbors if it's a single home, but it's extremely important. It'll make your job easier, it'll make our job easier. It typically brings down levels of ranker if they're, are any present, and it's just wise. You hear things from folks, because we have a very educated populace in Brookhaven who, they know their stuff, and particularly in this neighborhood. So you've got to, I just advise you, I can't tell you what to do, but I would really think it's a good idea to, to meet with folks in their homes, and, I don't say about buying them coffee, but something.
I don't know if that was a slight or a compliment to my neighborhood.
No, it's good. It's a super.
But I like it. They are educated populace.
We'll add that to the, to the whole review and how we reach out.
Okay. Getting back to the focus on this particular lot. Kenneth, I'd like to ask you a question. The name of the woman that you said that you were in contact with to communicate to the neighborhood?
Yes, Andrea.
And what, who is she in the neighborhood?
Uh, my understanding was she was the, you might know better, the head of the.
Brookhaven Fields Neighborhood Association President. Andrea Bonn.
I mean, what I'm guessing happened is she sent out an email last, and there's probably some people in the immediate area that it didn't cover, and so, but we openly said we weren't gonna move forward until we had, you know, talked with everybody, so I'll just get everybody's name and move forward.
You know, I, just a note to staff, maybe it's a question to staff, I think that there was, there was notification on the rezoning to property owners within 250 feet, sent out by staff, and we need to ask why some adjacent property owners of record didn't get that notice by mail.
They may have gotten it, and I think they were talking about they didn't get the meeting with.
Well, no, there were two comments, there were, there was both. I think that of a neighborhood of 700 homes, I think, you know, less than half are on an email list that sends notice through a neighborhood association, but then the city staff also had a notice requirement. I'm in favor of both avenues of notice.
That's okay.
Um, we can pull the list and see who was notified, to see how they may have not been notified, but we go from GIS data and pull it.
Right. Not from the center of the property, but from the edge of each end?
We'll look at that and see how, how they were missed. I can't answer that.
How often do we update our GIS? It's often tax records, I'd imagine, on this.
Correct.
And do we, we update that annually?
Well, we can only update that based on the county tax records.
Right.
So we're kinda hostage to that, so I can't really answer that question.
But you would, you would recommend that anybody who didn't get notice here would be able to come up to the property owner and to staff to be able to give their name and address, so that they get further.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay.
We got the letter from the city, we need to get that place.
Thank you.
Do you remember that homeowners association?
Every gentleman has it.
Okay.
I'm, I'm just, so I didn't hear. I didn't say much to you.
Okay.
We're just having a failure to communicate here. So y'all just need to talk.
Yes, nice folks, meet the nice gentlemen, and just exchange information. I think, I think you'd be more than willing to meet with them and talk to them about their concerns.
Are you an adjacent lot?
Yes, I am.
And you're an adjacent lot back here, correct? Okay. I would charge you to make sure that it's to your best interest, and you seem to be interested in the neighborhood input, so for this particular case, just take it for you to make sure that if you need help from the city and finding these people, location wise, please ask.
Thank you. Bates and I can give you a seminar on door-to-door if you wanna go tag along with this. Anybody else on this? Thank you all for coming for this public hearing, and we'll be watching this rezoning and see what happens, and making sure that, if, and if anybody would like, can we come to a neighborhood meeting on any of this? Tom?
It's, uh, it's not ordinary, and I would recommend that you not.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
I did not know that practice, so I did attend the first neighborhood meeting.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else? Thank you. Nobody else? We'll close the public hea, no, we gotta do the budget. Uh, now we have the, as part of this public hearing, a proposal. Uh, is anybody gonna present on this again?
Bonnie is.
Okay.
Bates and I can give you a seminar on door-to-door if you want to go tag along with us. Anybody else on this? Thank you all for coming for this public hearing, and we'll be watching this rezoning and see what happens, and making sure that, and if anybody would like, can we come to neighborhood meeting on any of this? Tom?
It's not ordinary, and I would recommend that you not.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I did not know that practice, so I did attend the first neighborhood meeting.
Thank you. All right, anybody else? Thank you, nobody else, we'll close the public hea, no, we've got to do the budget. Now we have the, as part of this public hearing, a proposal, anybody going to present on this again?
Bonnie is.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is the fourth public hearing on this budget. Hopefully, this is the final version, but it doesn't mean we can't accommodate changes even at this late day. The total budget for the city, what we're proposing for 2014 is $26,343,000, which is accounted for in five separate funds. The largest one, of course, is the general fund at $18,500,000, that's the general operating account for the city. The next largest one is the host, which is a sales tax account that's limited to capital expenditures, a store owner account, $1,452,000, hotel hotel, $1,300,000, and then a small complicated asset account to account for police seizures. Very minor differences in this version compared to the last one. I would say the major change, the raises are being proposed at 4%, and that's in this budget, but it's on the anniversary date, so the actual budget impact is going to be less. I use 2.5% to lump it in number for the fiscal impact. Also, money was added for a school study, a school study, and that was put in the city manager's budget. And then a couple of personnel changes, I changed a couple of people in departments, plus and minus is even between each other. So, any questions?
I don't.
We had talked, we've been talking a little bit about what is the right level of a raise to give up, and do you happen to know what our neighboring cities, what level that they have given?
The cities I surveyed, I just looked at their budgets, and they were normally in the 3.1, 3.5, whatever, same for the most.
I also have a question about the raises. It's important to, for the citizens to understand who is benefiting from that 4% raise, because we have a vendor form of government. Most of our employees are police, is that correct?
Correct.
With the exception of less than 10 administrative salaried people, so the raise is essentially a police raise. Is that correct?
That's correct.
It's also my understanding, Bonnie, you mentioned that this would be a raise given on the anniversary day, not at the end of the year or something, and is it guaranteed 4% across the board, or is that the discretion of the department?
The intent was to be a merit based on performance.
So based on performance as discerned by the chief and by the city manager, based on performance?
Correct.
So somebody could get a 0% raise, or somebody could get a 10% raise, is that right? Maybe not 10.
You have to manage your money within that department.
Right. Okay. Do you happen to know what the dollar difference would be between a 3.5 and a 4% raise?
In the ballpark, $11,000, based on, most of the police came on in July and August, so that's less than half a year, but that's making the biggest impact.
Actually, I think in my calculations, if you took a full percent, it might be around $12,000. If you took a half, from 3.5 to 4, it would be $6,000 annual budget.
Dear, who would be appropriate to ask or talk about, particularly with regards to the police department, surrounding jurisdictions, and what might be happening in those jurisdictions when it comes to their compensation packages?
Well, it varies. If you're talking about the full compensation package, it could be take-on cars, it could be educational assistance, it could be bonuses, it could be a raise, so there's a difference in the compensation package and the actual salary. In many jurisdictions, when there's an increase in salary, that is across the board and includes all departments.
And I know, anecdotally, from when we were hiring our police, a lot of the reasons some of the police came to our department was because they hadn't had raises in five or 10 years of departments they were in, or that we had a little bit better compensation package, and Lord knows we have a great police department, and I want to make sure we retain those that we have invested in already, so, and our staff, non-police staff too, that are excellent and have been doing a great job for us. So, it's important to us, as a business decision, to make sure we retain top-quality staff in all departments, so that's a priority for me, I think it is for council too.
Yes.
I would agree that retention is essential. The cost of losing people, replacing, retraining is enormous, and I don't want to be penny-wise and pound foolish, but I just think we have to be aware that, you know, a lot of people aren't getting raises, or smaller raises. I think the average among even private industry is somewhere between 2.8 and 4 maybe. Would it be possible to hear from the chief, to hear his thoughts on this?
Is that a paper?
Just a point, because I'm not sure if the, during the public hearing portion, if we're going to have the debate subject in motion and discussion, if that wouldn't be a better opportunity to get some of this.
Sure, okay. Anybody? Did you have anything, Jim?
The school study, what is that, and how did, where did that pop into the budget?
Recently.
I can address that. That was yesterday, it was, we had meetings with Glass folks, and I think it's important that our city consider the options for the independent school system. We have a resolution on our agenda to support the House Bill 486, which would allow for the creation of an independent school system, but the good news that we found out yesterday about that study, I think Dunwoody paid $40,000 for it.
Fifty.
Fifty, $50,000 for it, but all the heavy lifting was done, so all that, they let us know last night that the cost would be minimal, not even anywhere near that, maybe $5,000 to $10,000, to get our numbers plugged into the structure that they had already built with their study, so that was something that I had asked yesterday to be plugged in.
So is this total for the cost? Is this matching dollars for private citizens to raise the additional funds, or what does this number?
When we get, there's a, I think there's an amount in there, but whatever the cost of study will be, will be posited before we, it's actually engaged.
Do you want me to?
Yes. Marie?
Yes, we have budgeted $30,000 for that amount. Of course, we don't have a bid proposal, so this is an estimated amount. I don't think it's going to exceed that amount, in fact, I'm confident that it won't, but I don't have an exact number, and based on what the Dunwoody study was, and I think what the efforts would be that would be required to do Brookhaven's, I think 30 is a reasonable number.
I guess my question is, and I don't, I support the school, I support what we're trying to do, I just, I'm wondering why and how the decision was made, that the city is responsible for a study, to come up with a feasibility study for a, what will, I hope, ultimately be an independent school system.
I think it just goes to further support the resolution that's on your council agenda for this evening, supporting the independent school system, the House bill.
We want to make sure we're ready in case that it comes up. Education is a huge issue in our city. We've had a forum dedicated just to public education issues back, I guess it was this summer, or spring, and I know that this is an important issue for me, it's an important issue for most people I've talked to in Brookhaven. The city has been trying to do things to help bring attention to some of the issues with DeKalb County public school system, and the fact that this bill is moving forward to be caught flat-footed without a reasonably low-cost study taking place for our city, I think would be kind of, I don't want to say irresponsible, I just don't want to be caught in that position.
Well, I'd also like to add some points of why it's so important. The county school tax accounts for over a third of the property taxes you pay on a residential home. In my experience of knocking on doors and talking to neighbors, it was the number-one issue that people wanted to talk to me about, and if we're supporting a House Bill 46 in a resolution, we should certainly understand the feasibility of supporting a bill like that, if that option, basically, the House bill just gives residents the ability to make a choice of whether or not they would want an independent school system. It does not create the school system, but we need to understand in Brookhaven, and maybe it's a Brookhaven-Chamberley-Dorvo conversation, maybe it includes Dunwoody, it's a worthwhile investment for the city to make, because it has such a tremendous impact on economic value of our city. It raises property values if you have a good school system, it attracts employers, all of that adds to the property tax digest for the city, so.
But the justification, I think, is economic development.
I don't disagree with that, I just, it seems to have made a transition from what heretofore was a private, was a private effort, whether it be through the charter school or something, to now it's something that the city has chosen to take on, and I just, I had not heard that discussion. It made a leap overnight, it seems, and I just wanted to make sure that we understood that the city is now committing to spend time and money to support this effort. I think it's a worthy cause, I think it's a great thing we need to be doing, I just wanted to, I had some concern that it was crossing over from a private effort that seemed to be gaining strength and was well-supported, to now it's going to be an effort that will be supported by city staff and/or, or not and/or, but and city funds.
It's not a private effort on, I don't know what that, where that's coming from, it's, the city of Dunwoody did a study, which they paid for and did because it was thought was an investment for their citizens. There is a private effort, a group form, but this study is not done for this group, it's done for the city of Brookhaven, for our purposes, and.
And I also don't think, at least in my understanding, and Marie, correct me if I'm wrong, there's no dedication of city staff time in this effort, is there?
No, there's not, and we don't expect any.
But if we're spending city funds, we're going to at least, we're going to have to solicit for a consultant group, we're going to have to coordinate that advantage, and I know that that's a minimal amount, my point is not that, my point is, is that it seems to have taken that leap from becoming, from something that was being pushed by parents and residents, which is where I believe it should come from, to something that is now a city responsibility.
Yes. I'd like to make a comment on this. Education has been something that, for all of us, during our campaigns and while we've been in office, has been a very important issue. It's come up a number of times, it's already been repeated here on this dais. There's very little we've been able to do in the past, because it's been at the DeKalb County School Board. There is a move underway right now, that's a collaborative effort between the two new CEOs of the county and of the school board, and we're hoping to capitalize on that. Some of the smaller steps that we've agreed to do as a city is to start taking, having a financial footprint on some of the activities that take place within, for the DeKalb County School Board, that enhances the city. Small levels, but it's part of having skin in the game, which gives you a louder voice. I analogize what's going on here with this potential opportunity to do this study, similar to a new city coming out and having to have a CVI study. They cannot move forward until they're legitimized and saying they'll be able to do it. This thing is moving forward, and we have an opportunity to use this to address a very key issue for the city, and I think by doing this, it enhances our power base in being able to leverage what we can get.
All right. Anything else? Anybody, any citizen comment? All right. Last time for the budget hearing, so last one. Jeff Keller, you have one?
Mr. Mayor, gentlelady, and gentlemen of the council, first of all, thank you for all the work you've done this past year, what a difference a year makes. And as I understand it, the budget's coming in for next year at over $26 million. Wow. Everything I've looked at on the budget, I've cruised up, everyone I've talked to appreciates the additional monies that we're now able to use in our parks, we're happy with police funding, I just wanted to come up and say thank you. And also, for our neighbors over in Lakeside, their CVI study has just come out. For the record, the University of Georgia predicted 25.1, we come in at over $26 million. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else there? All right. All right, we'll close the public hearing on the budget. Thank you, Bonnie, thank you, staff. All right. We'll adjourn the public hearing. Okay, we'll open the, reopen the regular meeting. I think I've done my opening remarks, and we have some swearing-ins to do, is that correct, Marie?
Yes, for the new Planning Commission members. Caitlin Miller.
I saw Caitlin Miller, she just stepped outside with.
Bert Levy.
Bert Levy's here. This is the appointment of Mr. Bert Levy to the City of Brookhaven Planning Commission.
Yes, you have a copy, that's a, oh, thank you.
All right, if you raise your hand. On my honor, I state your name.
Bert Levy.
You gotta repeat, I'm sorry, repeat after me, man. I'm sorry.
On my honor, I, Bert Levy.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the office of commissioner of the Planning Commission of the City of Brookhaven.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the office of commissioner of the Planning Commission of the City of Brookhaven.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Support and defend the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of Georgia, and the Charter, ordinances, and regulations of the City of Brookhaven.
Support and defend the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of Georgia, and the Charter, ordinances, and regulations of the City of Brookhaven.
I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money due to this state, or any political subdivision or authority thereof.
I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money due to this state, or any political subdivision or authority thereof.
I am not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States, any other state, or any foreign state, which I am by the laws of the State of Georgia and prohibited from holding.
I am not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States, or any other state, or any foreign state, which I am by the laws of the State of Georgia and prohibited from holding.
I am otherwise qualified to hold said office according to the Constitution and laws of Georgia.
I am otherwise qualified to hold said office according to the Constitution and laws of Georgia.
I will perform the duties of my office in the best interests of the City of Brookhaven to the best of my ability, without fear, favor, affection, reward, or expectation thereof.
I will perform the duties of my office in the best interests of the City of Brookhaven to the best of my ability, without fear, favor, affection, reward, or expectation thereof.
Stan Siegel, if you want to come on down? And recognize the outgoing planning commissioners?
We have three planning commissioners who are rotating off the planning commission this year, two of which we recognized at our planning commission meeting two weeks ago, Commissioner John Hess is in the back, and Commissioner Jack Conner is here. Tonight, we are recognizing and want to express our appreciation to Commissioner Adrian Schmidt, who is rotating off. Adrian, join us.
Come on down, Adrian.
It's been an exciting, it's been an exciting year, and one thing you'll always be able to take away is that you were the first planning commissioner for the, you know, for the City of Brookhaven, and will always be with us, so I'd like to express our appreciation on behalf of the mayor, the council, the staff, and myself, and the city.
Thank you, John and Jack would stand up as well, too. Thank you for your service. And I'm aware that some of you will be rolling onto some steering committees and other things in the future, so sit tight with us, please, we appreciate it. Anytime somebody completes their term, we like to keep them in the fold, as long as they didn't embarrass us or do something crazy, so we like to keep them rolling in through things, so we appreciate that. Marie?
Yes, Mayor and Council, it is with great pleasure that I have the opportunity to introduce to you our new Parks and Recreation Director, Mr. Ray Holloway, who is a veteran Parks and Recreation Director from the state of Mississippi, Clinton, Mississippi, and Ray, if you will just stand up, I know you had a chance to be greeted by many of the people here in the audience. He starts working with us on January the 13th, he's already toured all of our parks, very excited about his background and experience, and he is just the perfect fit for the City of Brookhaven, so welcome, and I look forward to working with you, Ray.
Hey, Ray, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ray, do you want to come down and say anything? I don't want to put you on the spot. I do kind of, but don't.
I really appreciate everybody. Marie, Ray, everybody. That's awesome. You've got a lot more to say.
Thank you. Do you know that the owner of your local newspaper in Clinton, Mississippi, sent me an email saying we've done real well to haven't gotten it. He was a little upset that you were leaving, but he would say, "You've done a great job to get this man." So that was from the owner of your newspaper in Clinton, Mississippi.
Well, I had a lot to say.
Did you have his grass cut every week or something?
No.
Thank you. All right, we have recognition of the Girl Scout troop.
You weren't hinting at something about the cutting grass, were you, Mayor?
No. Were you behind the stage or something?
I suppose that this duty falls to me since I was out there slaving away with them. But Marion Kelly had set up a Girl Scout troop effort, and I'm going to actually pull the email up so that I can read probably. And in the background, while we're waiting, there's some pictures of the Girl Scouts out. If we can queue up those pictures. They're there. The lights are going to be shining on the screen. There you go.
What's the, do you know the number of the Girl Scout troop?
I might have. Marion, you want to go help me out? Because I'm having some trouble finding that email, but.
Just tell us about them and what they did.
Come up to the mic.
Come on up to the mic.
Come on up to the mic so our TV viewers can enjoy this.
We are very appreciative for the Girl Scouts. It's the Seventh graders at Levitt, and their troop leader is Stephanie Hammond. And in fact, she's the person on the left right there, and her daughter is the one on the right of the picture, and that's Larry Shaw, who's president of the Thorpe University, who always also contributed and also contributes a lot of volunteers to our efforts to continue to improve that park. But basically, it was a project to help them achieve their Silver Award. And Carol Simpson came up with a great idea of planting daffodils in the park. So we planted 600 daffodil bulbs all over the park. It's going to be gorgeous in the springtime. And the wonderful thing about this project is it's something that will last for many years to come because the daffodils that we ordered with the help of Carol, who owns Ash and Simpson, are the kind that naturalize and continue to come back every year. So it's really a wonderful thing. It's not only great for the park, but I think it's just great for the community to be able to work with these community groups like this and give them a chance to learn how to be good citizens of Brookhaven.
I did find the email. Thank you, Marion. So I want to read a little bit more about some of the details because I think it excites people to think. Stephanie Hammond, troop leader, and Carol Simpson, owner of Ash and Simpson Garden Center, and a member of Friends of Brookhaven Park collaborated to plan the project. The Girl Scouts raised funds for the bulbs through a holiday mailbox decorating fundraiser. Additional funding was provided by Post-Glynn, whose apartment community is adjacent to Brookhaven Park. The Girl Scouts will complete the project in the spring when the daffodils bloom with the installation of a park bench for enjoyment of the flowers by park users. It's a tremendous effort. I was extremely proud to be a part that you asked me to come out and help plant some of those bulbs. And I think it's indicative of all the great volunteers you'll have in the Parks Department. So, thanks so much.
We have special thanks to Bates for his.
Tool.
We'd have still been there today planting bulbs. So thank you for your help.
Yes, Bates had an attachment to his drill. Not the daffodils is great. I'm glad to hear about that, but Rebecca kind of spearheaded the, spearheaded the bulbs, two little bulbs and a pansy plantings in all the park entrances. And so Bates' little drill tool helped plant many a bulb in Brookhaven. So thank you for that. Wonderful project. It's going to be something different every year, and we're really excited about just starting to take ownership of our parks and really changing the way they appear. And that's important to all of us and to the community. So thank you very much to Girl Scout troop. Don't know the, was it, what's the number from Levitt School? There's no number? Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Agenda announcements.
I'd like to add, if it pleases the council, I'd like to add an item to the new business. That's the consideration of a moratorium for stream buffer variances.
Okay.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Do you want to put a date on that, Jim?
We'll do it when we make the motion.
Okay. All right. Where do you want to put it on the agenda?
Number four on new business. Number four under new business.
All right.
Okay, four.
All right. Is there a, did we do a second? All in favor of the agenda announcement signifies, agenda amendment signifies it by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the agenda is amended. Public comment. We have another public comment section here. Do you have any names, Daniel or Susan? Okay, we have, anybody in the public want to say anything about what's on the agenda? All right, appreciated. The public comment section is closed. Consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, three items. First item is the minutes from the Brookhaven Council meeting December the 10th. The second item is the approval of the 2665 Beaufort Highway sublease. And third item is the approval of the 4362 Peachtree Road sublease terms and form of the lease. I might mention that while you don't have the final format and language of the 4362 lease, it will follow the outline and language in 2665. As you all know, as we mentioned earlier, we're still working out that lease, but the terms have been agreed to. And as soon as we get our response back from the property owner, we will be able to get back with you. And submit, just submit it. We do ask for your approval of this under consent.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I move we, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I move we approve the consent agenda, subject to receipt and approval of the sublease and the sublease terms and form of the lease by the city attorney prior to, I guess, signature by the mayor.
All right.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approval?
Just a point of discussion. Is it possible to do a consent agenda subject to that motion?
The.
To the receipt of the lease?
I mean, I.
It just seems to be three items, and I just don't know how you do consent agenda approval subject to.
My recommendation is, is that the, that the sublease will be identical to the lease between the corporation and the landlord. This will be a sublease between the corporation, the finance corporation, and the city, with the only proviso that the lease will be terminable by the city on each 12/31 during the year, and any indemnity provisions that may otherwise be in the regular lease. The sublease, it will be subject to existing law and will not constitute a waiver of sovereign duty.
So the question really, I think, is in that, in our Brookhaven Finance Corporation committee meeting, we approved the terms of the lease with the addendums that Jim was mentioning. I understand the intent of where he's coming from. I just don't know procedurally if how we did.
Well, procedurally, if you'll just amend your motion to approve the consent agenda, then that should take care of it.
I withdraw my motion and substitute it with, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I want to just make sure that's done right. So if the motion had already been seconded, does there have to be a second to the withdrawal?
Well, if it's already been seconded, then, good point, Mr. Mayor. I wasn't listening. Then vote, then I suggest you vote that motion down and then start a new motion.
All right. All in favor of the motion as first stated by Councilman I signify so by saying aye? All opposed?
No.
All right. That's the first, I mean, that's the first time it's happened. All right. Motion is denied. Is there another motion?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second it again.
Any discussion? You got any problem with that one, Bates? All in favor of adopting the consent agenda as stated by Councilman I signify so by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. The consent agenda is approved. Looks like Friends of Brookhaven is up next.
Right. Mr. Mayor, as we mentioned earlier, we're going to reserve this for the event that starts at 7:00 PM. I noticed that Shannon Cameron was here. Okay, J.D. Clockadale is here. This is to announce that the challenge grant that the city made available to the purchase of the AEDs has been met by the Friends of Brookhaven, and there will be a check presented later this evening and comments and presentations made.
Well, I'd like to say congratulations to the Friends of Brookhaven. Y'all deserve a round of applause.
Thank you.
And thank you to all those at Gabe as well. I understand you were one of the first people publicated the Gabe. That's great. Appreciate that. Okay.
All right, the next item is steering committee appointments, Mayor.
All right, I have some steering committee appointments for the transportation plan, the comprehensive plan, the Parks and Rec master plan, and the Beaufort Highway Improvement Plan. I'd like, Marie, for one minute, if you could just explain what the purpose of these committees are.
Yes, thank you. The purpose of a steering committee is to have a core group of citizens representing varied interests in the community, but have interest in particular areas, whether it be Beaufort Highway and economic development strategy, or comprehensive land use plan for the city, or a transportation plan, and then Parks and Recreation Plan. Steering Committee members are there as boosters, as their volunteers, supporters of the city, cheerleaders for the city in this effort. But they're the core group that we're going to rely on to show up to all of our meetings, our public engagement meetings. In these public engagement meetings, the public will be invited, so they're certainly welcome every time to come to these meetings. But the core group will be there to get a sense of the public and the community for which they represent, and, you know, to bring forward their thoughts and opinions as we move the process along in creating, the first time ever, a comprehensive plan for the city. That will be a 20-year plan, it's a 20-year planning horizon as to what the current status of lead use is and what the future development opportunities are, and how that will be supported, and what initiatives and what kind of capital improvements would be necessary to bring that about, or policy decisions. And there will be a setting of goals and objectives, as well as creating a long-term plan and a short-term plan for the comprehensive plan. The Beaufort Highway Improvement Plan will be looking at land use initiatives and opportunities for redevelopment along the Beaufort Highway corridor from city limits to city limits, and will be looking at an economic development strategy. So those members that will serve on the steering committee will have a focus primarily just on Beaufort Highway and the opportunities that will be presented for that corridor. Transportation Plan, members of the steering committee for the Transportation Plan will be looking at all modes of transportation, roads, pedestrian, paths, bikes, looking at that and how that's integrated throughout the city, and what improvements can be made. And the capital improvement plan will be created out of that instrument. And then the Parks and Recreation Plan will take a look at all of our parks in the city. The steering committee will look at those along with the public to look at the highest and best use for the parks. Will be soliciting information from the public as to what kind of activities and programs they'd like to see, and what kind of parks improvements they'd like to have within their plan. And we'll be looking at a planning horizon of about 10 years for that. Capital improvement program will be identified there. So their role will be to support the effort, to keep it on track, to bring comments from their neighbors and the community for which the neighborhoods that they live in, and their levels of expertise. They have no decision-making power. That rests with the city council. These plans, however, the comprehensive plan will go to the planning commission, so the planning commission is going to be a very key component of all of this because there will be updates that will be made to the planning commission during certain points along the way, and they will be hearing from the steering committee. They'll be hearing from Ms. Cannon, and that will ultimately move along then to the mayor and council, as will the other plans. Ultimate approval and decision-making will rest with the mayor and city council. But the sole purpose of this group is to have reliability, that we will always have citizens representing, again, a vast variety of interest in the community and living in different parts of the city, to bring their thoughts, their desires, their expertise, and what their neighbors are talking about. So that's their role.
I don't want to, I want to sort of clarify that, you know, the final decision does rest with the mayor and council on these plans, but the citizens are, by participating, are a part of the decision-making process. Their thoughts and opinions, they can decide what they want to put forward and can help influence how our Parks and Master Plans end up to be presented. So these are very important steering committees. These plans are extremely important. They affect the city, like Marie said, for the next 20 years. So I'm excited about them, and I want you folks to be excited about them because you will have direct influence on how Brookhaven looks and operates over the next 20 years. And that's very important. So I've made my selections with advice from council. I didn't take them lightly at all, and I'm excited about the people we have. These are lists of these committees are not, the committees are not fully fleshed out yet, but these are the people that we were able to contact, ones that I was comfortable with, ones that council was comfortable with. We still have some appointments to make to each of these committees. So these are, the committees are not fully fleshed out. They will be by the next council meeting. So if you're here, just please stand up when I call your name. If you're not here and watching on TV, thank you for agreeing to join. From District Three, we have Eric Stevens on the transportation plan. Another from District Three, Craig Twilliger.
Kendall.
Says Twilliger right here.
Kendall. Is Kendall Craig? Kendall. Not girl.
Who, well, Bates said your name was Craig. I mean, somebody put it in here. I didn't. Kendall Twilliger, thank you for standing. Joe Pilati, is he here? Mr. Pilati, I was going to name you chair as well. Chair, if that's okay with you. You impressed all of us at the charrette, the Martha Charrette. So thank you for your willingness to serve, and thank you for bringing your much-needed expertise to this very important plan. Eric Husdys, okay. I know Eric very well. He's another one of those folks that knows a lot about these types of issues. Wendy Butler, she's, I know Wendy, but she's not here. And Jennifer Harper or Jennifer Reynolds, she's from District Two as well. So those are the initial members of the Transportation Plan Steering Committee, so thank you all. Comprehensive Plan. Stan Siegel will be the chair. Stan, thank you for your continued service. Stan is from District One. Adrian Schmidt, he is from District Four. Thank you again, Adrian. Jack Honder, he's from District Three. Thank you, Jack, for, all of you for bringing your expertise to this very important plan. And Colette McDonald, she's from District One. All right, the Parks and Rec Master Plan. We have, from District One, Karen Whitehead. We have Jim Delaney from District One. Hey, Jim. We have Jonathan Byrd.
He's here over there.
From District One, there he is. We have Chad Bowles. And from District Two, we have Heather Chasman. And we have Beth Deerson. I'll see some of these folks tonight. And we have Vic Parker. And I skipped over one name accidentally. We have J.D. Clockadale. We have J.D. Clockadale for the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee as well. J.D., thank you. All right. And the final one, which is just a couple people, because I haven't gone through this one completely yet. We have, for the Beaufort Highway Improvement Plan, we have Bridget O'Donnell from District 3. And we have Todd McKinney from District 4. All right. So, still have a few more appointments to make to each one of these committees, but I want to applaud you for all. Thank you very much for your service to Brookhaven. All right. Next.
Yes, Mayor. I'm moving along to report some presentations to give you an update on our zoning map audit. I expect that by the end of this week, we should have a name, a company that will be helping us to conduct the zoning map audit. We have reached out to a couple of different businesses that do this kind of work and have this expertise, and so we are trying to finalize that before our Christmas break and be able to get that moving along. So once we are able to determine exactly the firm, the talents, and the cost, we will be then forwarding that to you immediately.
Any update on the file from DeKalb County?
Yes. They believe, and I do have a call into the county, there is, on a staff level, they believe that there is a charge for this, and that is completely opposite of what was told to me in our early days of cityhood. So I'm reaching out to get that, because that's an integral piece to all of this.
It's a huge piece. It's a huge piece. It's their sort of microfiche overlay of all the zoning classifications that they go on.
Exactly. So I'm hoping I'll have an answer back on that in short order.
All right. Thank you. Old Business?
Old Business, Resolution 2013-12-02, resolution adopting the budget for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2014, and ending December 31, 2014, for each fund of the City of Brookhaven pursuant to Article 5 of the Charter of the City of Brookhaven Charter of Appropriating Amounts shown in each budget as expenditures, adopting the item of anticipated funding sources, and prohibiting expenditures from exceeding actual funding sources. We had our public hearing earlier this evening, and this matter is available for your consideration and approval.
Is there a motion?
I move to, am I going to read the whole thing again? I move to adopt the Resolution RES 2013-12-02.
Seconded?
I'd like to offer a friendly amendment.
Is that proper procedure?
Well, only if.
If he agrees to it.
If he agrees to it.
What you got?
I'd like to suggest that we offer 3.5% raises, again, given on the anniversary, and to be performance-based, as judged by the chief and the department heads and the city manager.
I guess this is discussion?
Well, is there a?
Yes.
You know, I think, as Rebecca you pointed out earlier, in my opinion, it would be penny wise, pound foolish to send a message to our police officers who have gone above and beyond, certainly, and we have in this budget a 4% increase. I think that that is the wrong message to send to our officers, and certainly when it comes down to the monetary number, we're talking about $6,000 in a year, so.
I disagree. I think we're, if we, we've heard that other cities are 3 to 3.5. I think that we have plenty of case to be consistent with the other cities. I also think that, you know, we need to understand that this is a cumulative, and, you know, as those, as those numbers add up, it's small this year, and it continues to grow. So I'd like to offer my support to the amendment that was made for a 3.5% cap on the raises.
Let me just go a little bit further in depth on it then. I believe that making a move to not allow our management to determine the increase in salary, this budget approves a 4% increase, and that means anywhere between 0 and 4%, left to the discretion of the managers. That's not an automatic increase. It should be evaluated on a performance basis, as has been explained by the city staff, and to, well, I don't want to trivialize it, but it's nickel and diming on a personnel level. When you pay, you get what you pay for, and sending a message that we're going to nickel and dime our police officers when they join this voice is the wrong message to be sending to personnel. And the turnover cost that you have, if you don't retain good personnel, far exceeds the difference between a 3.5% increase and a 4% increase.
I don't think this is a discussion about whether we have, whether we're supporting our police officers or not. I think that there's no doubt whatsoever that we all support our police officers 200%. This is about being fiscally responsible. This is about being consistent with other jurisdictions in the area. This is about being responsible to our tax holders, or, excuse me, our taxpayers, and responsible to our residents. You know, I think also, the point that you did make is that, is that the 4% will be across the board for all salaries, then the department's head will have discretion. So it's not a 0 to 4, it's 4% pot of money to be distributed. And I just don't think that, at this point in our history, that we need to be, we need to be stepping out. Our officers are wonderful individuals. They've got all the best in the world, brand-new equipment, brand-new everything this year, and we'll support them any way we can. But it's not just the officers, it's the entire staff, plus it's the president. I think at this time, we need to, we need to be consistent with what we're seeing from other jurisdictions.
Well, just to clarify, the entire staff means only six employees, city employees. Everybody else is a vendor contract. So the balance, other than the six, is all of our Brookhaven Police Department.
Mr. Mayor, if I, considering Robert's rules associated with what's taking place here, it does discuss the fact that there could be, you could take, there could be a second on Mr. Gebbia's motion, and then there'd be a motion to amend by Ms. Williams, and a second to that, and then you would vote on the amendment first, and then vote on the, vote on the regular motion.
Okay. Is there a vote on the amendment?
Well, you need a second on Mr. Gebbia's motion.
Oh, there was a second.
There was a second.
There was a second.
So you were looking for is a second on Rebecca's friendly request for friendly?
On Ms. Williams' motion.
Are you sure that's correct? Because it seems void, not having the conversation in between before you take that act.
Well, I did reread it since the last time that I made this ruling. And so I have, I have, I did, I did go back and look, and the rules would support that amendment. If it gets voted down, then you vote on the regular, then you vote on the regular, on the regular resolution. If it passes, then, then it votes, then you have another vote again. This, in other words, the vote on the amendment will tell you which way this is going to go.
Gotcha. Is there a, all in favor of the amendment as stated by Councilwoman Williams, signify so by saying?
I second the motion.
You've already seconded it?
No.
Okay. Okay. I'm sorry. I thought there was already a second. All right. There's a second. Any more discussion? All in favor of the amendment as stated by Councilwoman Williams, signify so by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
You have to vote.
So the amendment passes.
Now, we have conversation.
So you, in other words, you vote for the amendment?
Yes, I do.
So now, now the motion on the floor is, and is a motion to adopt the budget with the amendment that has passed, modifying the overall raises from 4% to 3.5%.
No, I think it's just the other way around. 4% stands, and the 3%, 3.5% was just turned down.
It just passed.
Well, it passed.
Just passed.
And he said, the mayor said aye.
Yes.
Okay. Sorry. Really noted.
Was that the, and that was the approval of the motion, amended motion?
So now, so now we have an amended motion, which is to approve the budget with the amendment that the amount of raises overall, how it was stated, be reduced from 4% to 3.5%.
Okay. So I have the original motion. Do I just need to restate that, or?
No.
No.
Okay.
What do we need to do now?
Well, you need to vote on it.
Okay. Is there a motion?
The motion.
There's going to be a motion to vote on the budget we just amended.
I move that we adopt Resolution 2013-112-12-02.
I'm sorry, Ms. Chase, the motion is on the floor. I mean, as far as the resolution is on the floor, it's been amended, and so you either vote up or vote down as far as the.
So the mayor just needs to call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Vote on the resolution. All in favor of adopting the resolution signify so by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Okay. That's two to one, right?
I agree with that.
Oh, you did, three to one? Okay. So the resolution passes as amended. All right. Time is. Okay.
Well, I'm just a little confused, because there was no conversation. So I just wanted to know when that was going to happen.
Well, I had no idea either, but you did have your conversation and your discussions, and I think both parties were very, were very eloquent as far as their discussion and what was taking place.
You want to comment?
Well, I never got a chance to say a comment, and you cut it off.
Yeah, one minute.
I'm sorry.
The only thing I want to say is, the whole intent of this, obviously, is based a lot upon morale. We differ from what the other cities use as a standard, because we're a first-year city. That has to be taken into account. And the job that was done this year was a phenomenal job. 4% represents probably a point over what the average would have been, but it's a statement saying, "Thank you for a job exceptionally well done. We didn't have standards to measure them against. We will next year." And I thought it was a very positive statement, especially given what it was in the scheme of things given the budget. So be it. It was at 3.5%. I still think that's a very respectable amount. I think it certainly is, shows appreciation on the city's part, but thank you for the opportunity to have me offer my comment.
And we also have an opportunity for a mid-year budget adjustment as well.
Well, that'll be to address next year's.
All right. So we have Kay, New Business. I'm going to take a recusal and a bathroom break, so.
Ms. Williams, you are now. Mayor pro temp.
Okay. I'm in charge. Take your time, ma'am. All right. So the new business is the ratification of the contract with the Surety Construction for Labor Materials and Renovations to 2665 Beaufort Highway. Marie, do you want to give us any further explanation?
Just that this is the company that was the low bid for the renovation and remodel work for the new police department headquarters.
If I may comment, Councilman Gebbia asked me to explain this process under the code of ethics that has been adopted by the City of Brookhaven. A father-in-law is a financial interest of any councilperson, and in this situation, a principal in a surety construction is the mayor's father-in-law. This matter was brought to my attention by the city manager well and early into the process, and there were two bids associated with the work that's now being performed on the facility at Beaufort Highway, the work that had to start in order to be able to move the police department by the end of the year, so that there wouldn't be any discontinuance or any break in any of the services of our police. This particular bid was substantially less than the other bid that was made, and in connection with that, I advised the city manager that she could enter into that contract since it was within the purview of her authority, being less than $50,000, the contract itself being $28,000, and particularly since it was on an emergency basis, if she could do so. And then out of an abundance of caution, so that there would be, you know, no issue, and that there would be full disclosure with regard to what's going on here, I recommended that this matter be discussed in this meeting, and also that the council also ratified this contract with the absence of the mayor, so that there be no question in the public minds that this is taking place, and that this has been acted upon. So the point being is, is that Ms. Garrett's action was within her authority to do so. However, for purpose of total transparency, this council is being asked to ratify that contract.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Mrs. Mayor, I move that we approve, ratify and approve the contract with the Surety Construction for Labor Materials for Renovations to 2665 Beaufort Highway.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Just a question. In addition to being the low bid, there's also the preferred bid by the police chief. Is that correct? Or was there?
Well, no. Police chief was, it was the purchasing manager made that recommendation to me.
And for clarification purposes, each of the council members were notified of this during the process when we were asked for our email approval to Marie, because she has authority to up to $50,000 via notification to us. So this process was well-known, and this is all in the attempt to really show transparency in what we're doing up here.
All right. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposition? With that, the motion passes. Bring back the mayor. Or I can keep going.
You're doing a good job.
You can move things along here. You can stay away for a little bit if you'd like, okay? We're almost done here. Two more.
Round two?
Yes. Item number two is the rezoning, RZ 13-13, Ryland Homes. This is the case that was requesting withdrawal without prejudice.
Is there a motion?
I move we approve the withdrawal without prejudice for rezoning ordinance, RZ 13-13.
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the ordinance signify so by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, of the withdrawal. Withdrawal. Say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right.
Item number three, Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2013-12-03, and this is the resolution to support House Bill 486, independent schools.
Is there a motion?
I move that we adopt Resolution 2013-12-03 in support of House Bill 486 to allow a constitutional amendment to form independent school, city schools.
Seconded? Discussion? All in favor of adopting the resolution signify so by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Number four?
Number four, it was part of the amended agenda, and that was to call for a moratorium for stream buffer variances.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I've prepared a resolution.
Okay.
So it can be, may I read it?
Yes, yes, please. Sure.
All right. This would now be labeled Resolution 2013-12-04. Resolve that commencing with the passage of this resolution, there be a moratorium, one, on any action by the Community Development Director and the Zoning Board of Appeals regarding the granting of variances to the city's ordinance on stream buffering. And two, any application for variances to the city's ordinance on stream buffering. Provided, however, such moratoriums shall not include the demolition of any residence or park thereof pursuant to the city's demolition ordinance. Further, resolve that said moratorium shall terminate at 5:00 P.M. on the 4th Tuesday of January 2014, 15, what year? 14?
14.
The 4th Tuesday.
Is this a discussion time on this?
So is there a motion? We won't have discussion.
Well, I move we approve the resolution as read by the city attorney.
I move we approve the resolution as read by the city attorney.
For second?
I second it.
Discussion?
A friendly request.
Yes.
Point of order, you said 5:00 PM on the fourth Tuesday, and that is our council meeting, and we possibly will be reviewing that, so you would have this terminating prior to our potential second consideration of this.
Then, why don't I change the ordinance, or the resolution to be midnight?
I would think it would be appropriate.
That was going to be a question I had too.
So, the ordinance is changed.
I have one other question. If we decide to lift the moratorium before then, does your resolution allow for that?
Well, you can certainly, yes, you can lift it at any time this council wishes to do so.
So, if we've studied it, and we can bring it up on that second Tuesday, we could do that as well.
That's right.
So, this is just the outside date.
All right, so we need to vote down the ordinance or do an amendment. Just like Joe, you want to do an amendment?
I, yeah, my friendly request is to.
Friendly amendment?
Amend the amendment with a change of time from 5:00 PM to midnight.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, so we're now going to vote on the motion as amended. All in favor of the motion as amended signifies so by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, that's passed.
All right, other business? I don't have any other business to bring before the mayor and council.
Public comment? Anybody have any public comment? Okay. Mayor's comments?
They just did. They voted on as amended.
All right, mayor's comments just come to the celebration in about thirty minutes here at Town Brookhaven, and they come tomorrow to the tree lighting and the time capsule burial at 7:00 at Blackburn Park. Yes, you have some?
Just on the time capsule, I did get a chance to visit Oakley Thorpe's. It's called the Crypt of Civilization, and it will not be open until the year 8113. So, stay tuned for that one, but your Brookhaven Time Castle will be open in 25 years, and I just want to send a reminder out to, out to everyone, please, please consider writing up something of what you think Brookhaven will be in 25 years, or getting it to the city's hands. You can drop it by my house. I think it's a tremendous opportunity that 25 years from now, to be able to reflect upon what Brookhaven has become. That'll be fun to look back on the thoughts we had today.
And also, I want to continue that APB I had last meeting for the city poet, Don Best, if we can find where Don Best is. Have we had any luck with finding Don Best, Citizen Don Best? We got, Daniel, can y'all get some, find this fellow for tomorrow? I mean.
We can ask the police department to do that.
Please. He lives in the city, his name is Don Best.
Ron's doing it right now, look at this.
We would like, he wrote a poem, and the poem went missing, and we need to have it. I want that in the time capsule, it's a great poem. I'd like him to come to read it tomorrow. All right. We don't need an executive session, is there a motion for adjournment?
I still move.
Second it? Any discussion? All in favor of adjournment signifies so by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? We're adjourned.